First item of business is if you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda and if there's no objection, I would like to move the public comments, number, item number eight to number four. We had a number of people who had written in and it looks like we have a few people that may have joined us to speak this evening. Welcome, Mike. And, and so we'll begin with, with that change, we will, is there anything else on the agenda that needs to be addressed? Hearing nothing, we'll accept it with that change and approve it as with that change from item eight to number four. Also wanted to acknowledge that council member Chuck Smith is not with us this evening in Zoom. He is with us in spirit, I'm sure, but he was, had some family members to attend to and unable to be with us this evening. So with that, I'd like to, with Janie's support, we have several letters and I would like to start with the letter from Megan Williams, which Dennis, if you could read that into the record, please.
Sure, this is from Megan Williams, who's a law student, Washington Lee, and she writes, Dear Mayor Friedman and Lexington City Council, I am writing today to submit my comments for the June 4th Lexington City Council meeting. My comments are as follows, in the wake of George Floyd's murder, as well as the countless other deaths to black citizens at the hands of law enforcement, I'm reaching out to city council to see what our city plans to do in response. I would like to see engagement and action from the Lexington Police Department on the matters of police brutality and systemic racism. I think it would be beneficial for the entirety of the Lexington governmental infrastructure, including the LPD, to engage in robust and frequent diversity training, reexamine any past complaints of racial bias, and facilitate transparency with the residents of Lexington on these matters. I would also like to learn more about the process surrounding officer conduct complaints. Are these complaints available to the public? Can a misconduct complaint against an officer be wiped from their record? Is there a set of laws or administrative code sections that cover this material that is specific to Lexington? Or are these procedures governed by Virginia law? Thank you in advance for addressing these matters during your city council meeting. I look forward to tuning in virtually. Best, Megan Williams.
Thank you, Dennis. Next correspondence we have is from Maria and I've asked Leslie Strong to read her letter into the record.
This is from Maria Liberopoulos. In the wake of the murder of George Floyd and the civil unrest around the country, I want to reach out with a few comments and questions in advance of the June 4th city council meeting. As I'm sure you are aware, WNL, both undergraduate side of the campus and the law school is not particularly diverse institution. Sorry, are there any plans for the city of Lexington to foster further understanding and diversity in the community and alongside the university? In other words, how can we show prospective students and current students that their community is committed to inclusivity? What does the training of the Lexington Police Department entail? Are sensitivity and diversity training included? If not, why and can this kind of training be included in the coming months and years? What kind of training does the Lexington Police Department provide officers with to prevent police brutality? Are the disciplinary records of police officers sealed and confidential? Or are the records available to the public? If sealed, why and are there any plans to change this? Can we ensure that the library downtown has books written by black authors? Specifically, books that tackle issues of racial injustice? I'm happy to send across a, across a suggested list of titles. Finally, what can the local community and university do to assist you and the city council in fostering a progressive and inclusive community? Thank you in advance for your attention to this note in the wake of the recent events, the presence of the KKK in town last year, and the push to remove Confederate monuments in Richmond and beyond. I think all members of the Lexington community can work together to make the city a more inclusive and understanding environment. Thank you, Maria.
Thank you, Leslie. Next letter we have is from Lauren Finley and I've asked David Ziegler to read that into the record.
Hello, Mayor and Janie Hausheter. I hope you are doing well. I am writing to ask questions and comment with regard to the city council meeting tomorrow. In light of recent nationwide events, I would like to know a little more about how the Lexington Police Department functions, what training with respect to diversity they have, and what the process is for internal investigations on police with complaints against them. I think now more than ever, it is so important to retrain police regarding diversity, racism, and de-escalating a situation. I am very ignorant about the training process of police, so I would like to know if police are required to undergo regular training or if this training only occurs in the police academy. Could you please provide an overview on this topic? Lastly, could you please give the community specific numbers on the composition of the LPD? Specifically, how many minorities, women, and people who grew up here make up the LPD? Ultimately, I would love to learn more about who comprises the LPD and the training processes that they go through, particularly with respect to diversity training. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I look forward to listening in to the city council meeting and learning more about the community in which I reside. Best, Lauren Finley. And I believe Ms. Finley is a law student or a recent graduate from WNL Law.
Thank you, David. I have a letter from Charlotte Cook. Dear Mayor Friedman, I'm writing to inquire as to whether or not the police department mandates all officers to utilize body cameras and requires them to turn them, turn them on immediately after responding to a call. I'm also writing to inquire if the police department employs evidence-based de-escalation training for all situations that require such tactics. As recent national events can attest to, the presence of video footage and officers' knowledge that directions are being ordered have enormous impact on outcomes between the police and civilians, particularly civilians of color. The statement through for de-escalation training is long disregarded and leads to police officers disproportionately targeting, injuring, and killing civilians of color. If you could kindly provide me with details regarding Lexington Police Department's policies for body cameras and de-escalation training, I would be greatly appreciative. It does not in fact use these strategies. I would strongly urge the department to reconsider and will be similarly grateful if you could direct me to the authority to discuss adopting the regular use of standard procedures throughout the Lexington Police Department. Thank you for your time for helping to ensure Lexington is doing all it can to protect the safety of each and every one of citizens trying to interact with the police. Since clearly Charlotte Cook, a former resident of Lexington. Where the other correspondents, we cover them all. I know, I perceive, Mike, well, since you're here to address council as well on behalf of an organization. If so, I'd recognize you at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Friedman and all the members of the Lexington City Council. I represent the Rockbridge Area Ministerial Association and have a letter I would like to read to you tonight on a very similar theme as to what you've heard before, if I may.
Please, thank you for being here.
The death of George Floyd is an example of racism in America. Systemic racial oppression is woven into the infrastructure of our community, including where our houses are built and how much they are worth, where our churches are built and how well endowed they are, where our banks are built and who owns and operates them, and too many of our social and cultural customs to mention here. In this case, systemic racial oppression made it seem acceptable to a group of law enforcement officers for one of them to kneel on the neck of George Floyd until he died. We, the undersigned members of the Rockbridge Area Ministerial Association, believe racism in all of its forms is a sin against the fundamental order of the Creator, who made all human beings of every gender and race, language and nation, in the image of God, and who calls us into communion with God and with one another. This faith makes us accountable for the well-being of all of our neighbors. Each of our denominational bodies has condemned racism and the murder of George Floyd. And of course, we condemn racism and this incident of racial violence. But condemning racism is not enough. God demands that we strive to dismantle racism. We have outstanding resources available for anti-racism training. We know how to transform lives and institutions, but we must stir up the will to do it. We pledge to work together to implement anti-racism training in our congregations and to work with other institutions and individuals in our community with urgency and persistence. In addition to affirming our commitment to dismantle racism, we affirm God's will that we work together to promote policies and practices to protect and preserve the lives of our neighbors from racial violence. The way to reduce violence and to increase effective policing is well researched and understood as shown by the 2015 final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing and the 10 policies identified by Campaign Zero for protecting and preserving the lives of our neighbors. The good news is that the Lexington Police Department observes many of these guidelines already, and interim Chief Riley is committed to making additional improvements. In 2019, Lexington police officers used force in only 3% of arrests, and the highest level of force used was control holds. Strangleholds and chokeholds are forbidden. We invite allies in the community to join us in building on this good work by enacting these policy recommendations throughout our community and the Commonwealth of Virginia. We also encourage everyone to take psychological first aid training so that we can help one another more effectively. The killing of George Floyd is not an isolated incident. It is an example of systemic racial violence in our community. It is sin, the opposite of what God wants for us. The good news is sin does not have the final word or ultimate power. One little word conquers sin, love. As Christian ministers, we know the love of God in a person, Jesus, who calls us to repent and to follow Him into more authentic, abundant life. We have a choice, all of us, and we want you to know that we are ready to walk with people of all faiths or no faith, who also want to choose the way of love and to strive for the dismantling of racism and protecting the lives of all of our neighbors. And this is signed by 12 local pastors and a chaplain.
Thank you, Mike, for those inspiring words and words of comfort and encouragement. I greatly appreciate you joining us this evening and representing those folks. I'm not aware of anyone else that wanted to address council at this time or send in any other notes, but I would like to call on interim Chief Riley to respond to some of the letters that we've received in the comments. Chief Riley?
Yes, sir. Thank you, absolutely. Good evening, everyone, our esteemed mayor, council, and city manager. Just got a brief statement and then I'll really go into the nuts and bolts of some of the questions that have been put out today. But we, and I say we, as a community and as a police department, we're angry too from the horrible event in Minneapolis. Our hearts are heavy as well. We stand hand in hand with the community against that horrible event and dark day in our country. I've been asked many times what we'll do going forward, and I'll say this. We will continue, and I repeat, we will continue to not start with measures to make sure this will not happen in our city. To start, Lexington was rated the third safest city in our category in Virginia, and I'm very proud of that. This, this reflects hard work, compassion, and dedication to our duty to protect our community. This just doesn't happen by chance. The men and women of the Lexington Police Department are some of the most compassionate humans on this earth. I ask you that you don't put us all together or compare us to the horrible actions of one. He does not represent the majority of the women and men who tirelessly work to build bridges of trust every day. And I'll quickly go over some things that we have in place and have been in place for some time that folks maybe just don't know or want to know, and I'm, I'm very grateful and glad for this time to share some of these things with you that, that our department does every day. We currently have a staff of 17 sworn men and women, very dedicated men and women. There are three females and two African Americans on our force. Two of the three females are supervisors and one of our African American officers is a supervisor as well. We have three civilian females on the force with one being a certified crime prevention specialist. So we do have a very diverse police department, one of the most diverse in this area. Kind of moving into the use of force and things like that. Our department policy dictates that police officers will use only that force which is necessary to protect life and affect lawful objectives. Every incident which force is used by a Lexington police officer is thoroughly investigated and documented by supervisory staff and is reviewed through the department's chain of command. It goes through every supervisor in our department, examines this and looks at it, including myself as the chief. And this is whether a complaint is filed or not. Every use of force, we thoroughly investigate and document every time. Supervisory staff monitors officers' activities to identify patterns and provide for consistent proactive intervention when appropriate. And again, we talked about it, but I'm going to cover it again because I think it's important. During 2019, officers were required to utilize force in only three of 106 arrests. And those three incidents, the highest level of force that was used was compliance techniques, basically a hands-on approach. No firearms, no batons, anything like that. You know, these numbers translate to Lexington officers having to use force in approximately 2.8%, less than 3% of all arrests made. And when you combine that with the number of calls that we go on, the hundreds of calls we go on, only 106 arrests and only three of those we use force, very low. It's, it's a benchmark for us. If you compare it to national statistics, it's very, very low. Our training, we attend a 20 to 22 week basic academy, and it does include de-escalation, proper use of force, vast-based policing, and cultural diversity. And it is combined with other things, driving and legal stuff, but it does cover those areas. There's also nine weeks of field training with evaluations done every day on this police officer. The first year of employment, officers are evaluated quarterly, and in addition, all officers are evaluated on a yearly basis. All sworn officers get a minimum 40 hours in-service training every two years to include required cultural diversity and vast-based police training. So every two years, every officer gets that training. You don't just stop at the academy. It continues on throughout their entire career, which is always updated with current events and things like that. All of our required cultural diversity training has been completed this year already. We always go above and beyond the minimum training standards. We certainly stress leadership here, and when I say leadership, that doesn't mean what's on your collar or on your sleeve. It means leaders, it means integrity, doing the right thing when nobody's looking, and we stress that here. Another program that I'm really proud of, that I smile, that I'm personally involved in is the Crisis Intervention Training Program. It's a training program that came out of Memphis. It has a large component of de-escalation training with emphasis on mental health as well. And I'm very proud to say that the Lexington Police Department is a 100% certification in crisis intervention training. We also hold five instructors in-house with myself included, very proud of that. The Lexington Police Department, we are a fully accredited state agency and have been since 1998. We were the smallest agency at that time to be accredited, and we do continue and will continue with that. This requires us to go above and beyond the Department of Criminal Justice minimum standards. The department is stringently evaluated every four years by the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission, which is not an easy process by any means. Also, all employees, we require to do policy reviews on a continual basis and sign off on them all the time per our accreditation standards. Candidates that are hired here, they must pass a general knowledge test, interview board, agility test, polygraph, a very, very in-depth background investigation, and I think most importantly, we talked about this with some letters, a psychological evaluation, face-to-face evaluation. To ensure transparency with complaints, anyone can file a complaint and it will be thoroughly investigated. We have communications with the complaint. We give the timeframes and things of that nature, so it's a very stringent process. We have policies and procedures on that, and we maintain those policy procedures on how they're investigated and approved through our accreditation standards. You can fax, mail, phone, or even walk in and complain here, and it will not be ignored. I looked in 2019, we had one misdemeanor demeanor complaint, and it did result in a verbal counseling. So we only had one full complaint last year. And, and also with, with our three use of forces last year. So I'm very proud of that, and we, we do continually work, and I'll say this, there can always be improvements. We strive every day to make this place better, to make our community better, and we take that seriously. And, and the hearts, we, we have the biggest hearts of any police officer you'll ever see. Cameras, we do have in-car cameras and we've had them for some time, and we actually were really ahead of other police departments, and we continue to deploy our in-car cameras. Every traffic stop is used with our in-car cameras. We also use the audio component in almost every interaction we have. So we do utilize the cameras what we have, and we utilize them a lot. So I hope that answers a lot of questions. You know, I take pride, I stood tall. We, we should, should be glad the fact that we had this great protest yesterday. People expressed their emotions, expressed what they were feeling, and I think we really showed the world how to do that yesterday. And I stood tall with them, and I will stand tall Saturday with this community. And, and I hope, hope that puts some folks at ease, and I hope that answers a lot of the questions that were presented tonight. I love this place. I love this community. I'm from here. Most, every officer that, that works in this building is from here as well, and we love it here.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks for being with us and providing that great overview. Congratulations on achieving number three status, moving up in the ranks. And thank you for your support to ensure the safety in our community. Your whole team is to be recognized and appreciated for the good work that they do and the, the passion, enthusiasm with which you lead the, the team right now is terrific, and thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Thank you for, for your support too. I really appreciate the community support.
Absolutely. I also wanted to offer a, a brief message on behalf of our team or as follows, as our country faces yet another major challenge of racial tension and civil unrest, we stand united and remain united as citizens in our message that love over the challenges we face. We will take work, it will take work and engage to take a difference as we love truth and equality. Love, truth, and equality are the foundation of the belief that we have a unique and trended direction, sexual orientation, for whatever make us different. We must celebrate our differences while all are in our environment, everyone is offered and treated with respect and is given support, have an equal chance to succeed and grow. It's the afternoon friends and neighbors, like, late to George Floyd. Hopefully, our thoughts and prayers is same as others and many in the world. A positive way forward for our community, Minneapolis community, our country, and our world. And you do with our brothers and sisters of all colors to embrace this American unity, our Commonwealth and our country. As local government, we are committed to valuing our policies, our training, our ordinances, our employment practices, participation on our community boards and committees to promote racial equity and eliminate prejudices. In the words of Rayner Lucky, as people used to wrong about the motion of the sun, so they're still wrong about the motion of the future. The future stands still. It is we who move in infinite space. May we all move with purpose to promote respect, kindness, life, liberty, and love for our neighbors. We have an opportunity this Saturday to join our neighbors at Richardson Park to protest hatred, racism, and violence. Stand united to engage in dialogue, to support the healing process and seek our way, seek out ways. Our community can work together to promote peace, promote respect, and promote loving your neighbor. I invite you to join us Saturday at 11:00 AM at Richardson Park. Thank you all very much, and I don't believe we have any other public comments before us this evening. And we will move along into our, or actually I'll ask council members if they have any comments that they'd like to offer from comments they've heard, presentations.
I'd like to comment, the comments that you just made, we had a lot of audio issues, and it would be nice if everybody could at least get to hear that in a, in a better audio version. So maybe at the end, once we figured out what the audio problem is, or make sure our city clerk posts this so that everyone has an opportunity to, to partake of it.
Thank you, Marilyn. Very good. We'll move into the next agenda item of rings. First public hearing on ordinance 2020-05, An Ordinance to Appropriate Funds Approved in the Fiscal Year 2021. I'd like to open the public hearing. And I'm not aware of anyone who has written in or wanting to speak on this matter. Therefore, I'll close the public hearing and ask for council's consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-05 appropriating funds for the FY21 budget and establishing the rates and fees necessary to fund the 21 budget.
Second.
Thank you, Leslie, for the second. We have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call, a vote. Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Hens? Hit that mute button.
Aye.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Ziegler? Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. The next item is to receive public comment on applicant, applicants for one school board term serving July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023. We had a flurry of applications, but in the end, we have one applicant, Molly Fox. And Molly, for a call on you to speak, remind you and the rest of council and myself, the process for appointing school board members is different than most other boards and commissions. We invite people to apply and be considered for appointment, and we hear those presentations at our first meeting in June, and we are by law required to wait, I believe it's 14 days at least, until our next meeting, the second meeting in June, to actually make our appointment. So as a reminder to all of us that being the process, we will get to hear from Molly this evening. Council will have an opportunity to ask questions, and then we will move on and consider appointment in our next meeting. Molly, take it away.
Evening, Mayor and council members. I hope that you are all well and safe this evening. I would like to take a moment to thank you for appointing me to the Lexington City School Board three years ago and want to acknowledge the incredible support that council gives to our schools. It is clear that you have prioritized education in our community and as a school board member and a parent, I am grateful. I have enjoyed my time serving in this capacity. I'm proud of the things that the board has accomplished, and I ask that you appoint me for a second term. Over the past three years, the school board has worked well as a team, and we have accomplished a lot. In this short period of time, we managed a transition of our entire leadership team, including our superintendent, assistant superintendent, and principals at both of our schools, securing top-notch individuals with strong ties to our community. We have prioritized increasing faculty and staff compensation so that we can be competitive and attracting and keeping the best people for our schools and students. At the same time, we've maintained a sensible budget, being mindful of any requests that we make of council for funding. At the same time, we've maintained a sensible budget, being mindful of any requests that we make of council for funding. We've also made necessary adjustments as a result of the pandemic, as the entire city works its way through this budgeting upheaval. We have strengthened our relationships with the Rockbridge County School Board, Lexington City Council, Lexington City Police, and both of our schools PTAs by having regular ad hoc meetings, which have greatly improved communication between us and made connections that will help all of us better serve the needs of our community. Continuing our efforts at engagement, the school board surveyed parents and students about the high school, as well as school safety concerns. Based on the feedback we received, we developed a path forward in our commitment to our high school and a school safety plan that we began implementing this past year. I'm incredibly proud of how our administration, faculty, staff, families, and the children have handled the unprecedented challenges presented by the pandemic. While the board's focus for the foreseeable future will be navigating our way forward, we eagerly anticipate the day we can return to the things that we have temporarily had to put on hold. In particular, if I'm appointed to another term, I plan to focus on reviewing the way our school system can engage every family, beginning with looking at what we do right now and evaluating how that might need to change. This topic justifiably got a lot of attention at our Virginia School Board Association Conference held the end of last year. And I think that every school system in Virginia has room to improve, including ours. Thank you again for your time and consideration this evening. I look forward to the opportunity to serve our community in this way for another term.
Thank you, Molly. Do members of council have any questions for Molly? Very good. Hearing.
Sorry, we'll we'll ask one. One of the things you said you are interested in working on, you talked about the family engagement, and then in your application on best practices for school resources, oh, sorry, school recesses of our school. What does that tell, and is there a recess at the middle school when we have school?
Yeah, so this is a side project that I'm working on, and I've talked with Rebecca about it. Again, it's kind of put on hold at this point. I personally would love to see K and one get two breaks during the day. And I think, you know, the administration is is interested in looking into this. I think that scheduling has been the biggest holdup of the, there's only so many hours, so many hours and minutes that they have in the day, and trying to make that happen. I think that there are some, I've done a little bit of research, looking at what other schools in the country have been doing. There's a school in Texas that, or I guess a district in Texas that have been working with this, and they've seen things really improve, and even in test scores and just behavior of the children that get to run everything, you know, run that energy off. I think that I would love to work on that. It's just, I think that the family engagement really needs to come first. And at least as far as my priorities, and obviously, the pandemic comes before all of that. So I think that's where we are right now. But it is on my list of, it's on my wish list to work that in at some point.
Thank you. Thank you for your service on the school board.
Thank you.
Any other members of council have questions for candidate Fox?
I have one. This time last year, when other candidates were coming forward for appointment, there was a lot of discussion about students who were at risk, students who had special challenges. And I was wondering if there have been discussions yet about making any improvements or finding that there are any improvements needed to be made in curriculum or whatever? Or is that something that's ongoing for this coming year?
It's, that's a great question. It's always been a concern, and we did have some conversations after that meeting. And honestly, I think that our superintendent would probably be able to speak, and our principals would be able to speak. I was, it would be worth hearing from them on the specifics. When I heard everything that they are doing, I was floored, and they are continuing to look for new ways to reach those students. Students have individual plans. Melanie Camden talks about the spreadsheet that she has, where she is tracking each student individually. And they are meeting with teachers quarterly to come up with plans and assess, you know, where these students are and what needs to happen going forward. We are, there's always negatives about being a small district, but there are certainly some positives, and this is one of them, that these students can get the individual attention that they need. And, you know, again, I think that they would really be able to speak to this, all the things that they are doing in more detail than I can.
Thank you. And being a small school system is one of the perks that we have to make sure that our students do get the attention that they need.
They do. And honestly, I think that's where some of this family engagement can come in, because we are so small, that we can really, you know, take a look at what we're doing. And I think that some of the things that I learned about it at that conference were really eye-opening. And we, you know, have some room to improve there. And because we're so small, I think we will really be able to manage that.
When we used to go to conferences many years ago, we would bring back information to share with everyone about the various training sessions that each person attended. Are you all doing that as well?
We are, probably not formally, but informally, we've had discussions about the things that we learn. And certainly while we were at the conference, we were, the conversations were good.
And thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Anyone else have a question for Molly? Molly, I'll echo what Marilyn said, and one of the best practices that I saw when people show up with their kindergarteners, the more that we ask of them, the better off we'll be. And there was a concept of a compact with the parents. And encourage you to vet that idea and perhaps work with Principal Camden to see if that's something that can be implemented, because it's the big piece that you're mentioning of the family engagement. And a great deal of family engagement over the past couple of months with the COVID situation.
Present a whole different set of challenges for family engagement, depending on where things go. Yeah, it's really going to be something to work on.
Definitely. Well, thank you for being with us, and we'll look forward to considering your appointment at our next meeting on June 18.
Thank you very much.
The next item, six point three, is a public hearing to review your request from the George C. Marshall Research Foundation. And I'm going to call on Arnie to tell us a little bit about that, if anyone needs an overview.
Good evening to everybody. This is an application for the George C. Marshall Museum property. And it does include a comprehensive plan amendment request, a rezoning request, and a preliminary subdivision request. Mr. Mayor, would suggest that the public hearing for all three be open together for one presentation and comment period, and then we can vote on each of the three applications separately.
Very good.
I would direct your attention to page four of 26. I'm actually going to start in the reverse order. On that page, we show the plat. And you will notice that the Marshall Museum building does not exist completely on one parcel. It encroaches on the backside over onto property that is BMI. And also encroaches out into Anderson Drive at the upper left corner. Those property boundaries that are indicated to be vacated are highlighted in yellow, just to show you what the existing property boundary happens to be. And then in the darker black outline, you will see the lines of what the proposed plat would be for the Marshall Museum. And you can see at the backside of the property and also on the southeast side, it follows sidewalks that exist on the property in those boundary lines, and might, at least in my opinion, make more sense than the current boundary lines, where the building is hanging over the property line and the property is out into Anderson Drive. And then, so the first request is for a boundary line adjustment, which falls under the preliminary subdivision category. The property boundary is quite close to the rear portion of the building. So the current R1 zoning district does not meet the requirements. It has a larger side yard setback and rear yard setback than what is shown or what is requested. The applicant is therefore requesting a rezoning to the C1 zoning district, which is a commercial zoning district, which has very little to know, actually zero setback on the zero on the rear and side property lines, and needs a corresponding amendment to the future land use designation to the designation that is the mixed-use commercial office and residential designation. Again, it's really a boundary line adjustment that has been morphed into a rezoning and also a comprehensive plan amendment. That's all I have from the presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Council members have any questions for Arnie? Hearing none, I'd like to open the public hearing. And I'm not aware of anyone who has written in or any comments that were made. Therefore, I will close the public hearing and ask for city council's consideration.
I move to approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment Application CPA 2020-01 for the Amendment of Tax Map Number 17-1-2A to the Mixed Use Commercial Office Residential Future Land Use Designation.
Second. Have a motion as second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Hens?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler? Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much.
And I'll go ahead and make a motion for the other two as well. Take them each individually. I move to approve rezoning application RZ 2020-01 for the rezoning of tax map number 17-1-2A to the C1 Central Business Zoning District.
Michelle, I'm going to put you down for the second, I think I heard. Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mr. Ziegler? Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Hens?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. And item three.
The third one, I move to approve preliminary subdivision application PS 2020-03 for the adjustment of a property line boundaries between tax map numbers 17-1-2A and 17-1-1 in accordance with the plat completed by Perkins and Orson dated October 17, 2019, as submitted by the applicant.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, for the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Hens?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler? Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Arnie, thanks for the good work in getting that building situated appropriately. Next item on the agenda consideration of minutes, they were in your packet, any modifications or offerings for the minutes? Hearing none, we will accept those, approve those as presented. Thank you, Andy, for your good work. Next item on the agenda. I'm there and says, listen to establish a joint city of Buena Vista and the city of Lexington Board of Building Code Appeals. Jim, would you like to speak to this?
Mr. Mayor, I think Arnie Glazer is actually still with us and is poised to speak to this matter.
Terrific. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if we have, if we enforce the building code, we automatically are required to have a appeals board. So asking from council is to approve a resolution to establish a local building board code of appeals with the city of Buena Vista. Along with that, our set of bylaws are included in your packet. The state code allows us, or requires us to have a board of appeals, but also allows us to join another jurisdiction in establishing a local building board code of appeals. And we reached out to BB, and I've just learned a few minutes ago that BB City Council approved resolution and bylaws just a few minutes ago. Included in your packet, again, is that resolution and the entire set of bylaws. I have to tip my hat to Alan Mann, the building official with the city of Buena Vista. He has experience at the State Board of Appeals for a number of years, and he was instrumental in putting this set of bylaws together. There was a lot of back and forth and rewriting, but we couldn't have done it without Alan's expertise. I'm not going to go through the entire set of bylaws and just leave it to question in case you have any. There are some, I'll leave it at that, answering questions if you have them.
Thank you, Arnie. Do members of council have any questions regarding this resolution?
One, just to clarify, so the state code requires cities to have these boards, but not county? I'm just trying to figure out why, why Buena Vista and not also Rockbridge County. I'm just curious.
We did reach out to the county, and their response was, since they have, they enforce the building code, but not the fire prevention code, that they prefer not to join in with us, because we have to do both boards. So if we are going to enforce a building code, then we have to an appeals board. And if we enforce the fire code, we have to have an appeals board.
Thank you.
I just have one question and clarification. So we have not had the Board of Fire Prevention Code Appeals in the past either, is that?
That is my understanding. Trent is on here, and he could answer that. But my understanding is we have had neither the Building Board Code of Appeals or the Fire Prevention Board Code of Appeals, at least for the last 15 years, if not longer.
Is that satisfied, Leslie? Would you like for Trent to speak to that issue?
No, no, that's fine.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Arnie. Any other discussion? And what's your consideration of this resolution?
I moved to, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I think you're fine.
To approve resolution 2020-05 to establish a joint city of Buena Vista and city of Lexington Board of Building Code Appeals and to adopt bylaws for the operation of the Joint Appeals Board.
Thank you, Leslie. Ms. Alexander with the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote. Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Hens?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and hope we don't need to activate them, but glad that we have them in place, to be sure. Unfinished business. Anyone have any items? Hearing none, we'll move into boards and commission reports. The Blue Ridge Resource Authority met last month, and we approved an increase in the tipping fee to balance out the budget, an increase of $5 per ton. Also want to report that the Phase One closure project is moving along swiftly and should be done in a reasonable amount of time. And we're have ongoing progress with the VRA funding for Cell Two construction project. So if you would like to talk trash, please attend our next meeting. If you haven't been out to visit the landfill, encourage you to do so. The work that they're doing out there is significant and a big operation. But unless you have any questions, that's all I have to report for the Blue Ridge Resource Authority this evening. Main Street, Lexington.
We haven't met, but I do want you to know that our downtown businesses and all throughout town are open, and they're ready for customers. And they're taking all the necessary precautions to make sure that their customers are safe and that keeping everyone healthy and protected. So go downtown, and especially Friday, they're opening, we're in the phase two reopening process. So you can actually dine in restaurants, and they are taking precautions. So and also, we have the Liftlex gift card program, and that's started a couple of weeks ago. And already this past Monday, they've given out $4,000 to businesses. Their goal is to sell all the cards by Labor Day, and that would put $70,000 into the community. So purchase your gift cards and give them out as Father's Day presents, and that's all I have. So purchase your gift cards and give them out as Father's Day presents, and that's all I have.
Run, don't walk, and get a gift card and support the downtown businesses, thank you, Leslie. Planning Commission.
We met last Thursday to talk about the draft of the comprehensive plan, and we need everybody to participate. On Tuesday, June 16th, we're going to have a review of the comprehensive plan. We'll have a rollout and present it and take questions. You can watch it live on Face, on the city's Facebook page at 5 o'clock PM. If you can't make the Facebook page, it will be recorded, so you can review it afterwards and give comments to the planning, either to the planning department or to planning commissioners. The plan is on the city's website, if you go to Planning Commission, it's on that page. And I just want you to know, this really is something that will affect everybody in the community. I know we're looking, talking about racial equity. Planning and zoning is one of the places where the most discrimination has taken place in the United States. And it's one of those silent things, it's, that is easy to go unnoticed. In my 20 years in Lexington, I haven't seen anything purposely done as far as zoning and planning goes. But there are issues of inequality and inequity in zoning, and we don't always observe it. So it is important that everybody participate in this, in this, in this process to make sure that we have an equitable plan, and it really does reflect the vision of our community for the next five to 20 years. And anybody can participate in this. The questions we're looking at are, you know, what do you want your neighborhood to look like? Should you allow any commercial activities in your, in your neighborhood? Should it be a live workspace? Should it just be housing? What about downtown? What would you like to see there? Do you have enough sidewalks in your neighborhood or any part of town? Do you find yourself walking on the grass where we have incomplete sidewalks? If we built bike paths, would you use those bike paths? So anybody can participate in this process. I think everybody has an opinion on some of these things, and we would like to know what you're thinking. So please, on Tuesday, June 16th, 5 o'clock, participate in our Planning Commission rollout of the draft of the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions about planning? Very good, Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers?
Thank you, Regional Tourism will meet electronically on June 17th, but I did want to share one item with council this evening, and that's Tourism's Marketing Director Patty Williams has been working on something called the PACT Program. And PACT stands for Protecting All Citizens and Travelers, and it's an initiative where local businesses would have the option of signing on to a hospitality pledge, ensuring a consistent, dependable, and sustained level of safety and service. We are really fortunate in our community to have very low COVID-19 infection rates, and obviously, we'd like to keep it that way. And signaling to potential visitors, we are serious about safety and social distancing, would be a way to differentiate ourselves from other tourism destinations and allow us to better compete for visitor dollars now that the state's starting to open it up. And also would help to assure our local citizens that, that tourism isn't a threat to our health and safety in our community. In return for signing on to the PACT pledge, businesses will get access to an extensive online library with sector-specific reopening guidelines and supporting documents, and that material has already been collected, it's pretty extensive. The campaign would also offer a PACT digital logo for participating businesses for use online and imprinted materials. And finally, Regional Tourism would pay for and provide these businesses with free branded social distancing floor decals and window clings to present a united message to all residents and visitors that social distancing is being responsibly adhered to at participating businesses throughout our region. Regional Tourism staff is still working on this, but something we'll be considering at our next tourism meeting, and they'll also be reaching out to our regional partners, Main Street Lexington and the local chamber, for their input and suggestions and to see if they might like to work together in promoting this initiative. I'll forward to city council more detailed information about this program via email, but that's all I've got tonight unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Dennis. And look forward to when visitors are back and everyone remains healthy and best practices for social distancing and enjoying our beautiful community. Department of Social Services, Ms. Hens?
No report.
Thank you, ma'am, Rockbridge Area Recreation Organization.
The RARO Board of Directors met last night. We hit on a bunch of issues. Couple of them included that, of course, fall sports registration is occurring right now, and we definitely will be extending those dates so that folks that, as they feel more comfortable and as restrictions hopefully are lifted and kids can safely participate in sports, that we have a way forward for some of our fall activities. Obviously, we won't do anything that we can't do and that we can't, you know, concern ourselves with safety, but our goal is to have fall sports if we're allowed. Also wanted to update council that during this time of not having programs, we have taken the initiative and we, staff and some volunteers are rebuilding some dugouts over in Buena Vista at Laurel Park, so that's exciting. Two new dugouts have been, well, two old dugouts have been taken out and have been rebuilt, which is, which is tremendous. And then something that's important to, to, to the kids and the community, Camden Field over in Buena Vista has got so much history in that field, and we use it for youth football games over in Buena Vista, and there's not a working scoreboard. And over the years, Modine has donated funds in honor of their employees that volunteer for, for RARO. And so Modine, over the years, I think the amount is, we've got $4,100. And we have been talking about it for some time, and we have now, we are, we are trying to push and cross the finish line of getting a scoreboard at Camden Field. Some of the funds, we're really fortunate, there's, there's a fund at RARO that was started over 20 years ago, the Pickrell Fund, and the Pickrell Fund has some funds that, that support RARO, and we are able to use some of that money to, to complete this project. That's our goal, and we're excited about that. And I think that that will really, really enhance that, that facility. And I remember when I was a kid playing sports, I think you always enjoyed playing on a field with a working scoreboard, even if you're losing, but. And then lastly, you know, our board constantly, we, we, all of the boards that all of us serve on, we want to make sure that we have up-to-date and valid agreements, bylaws, you name it. And so RARO is, we, we're going to take a hard look to make sure that everything that we're operating under, which includes our, you know, Articles of Incorporation that were many, many years ago, our funding agreement that we passed a few years ago, but also our bylaws, we want to make sure that they are tightened up where they need to be. And so I have, over the next few weeks, we're going to be asking some of our attorneys, municipal attorneys to, to help us. We think that we have some of the bylaws, hopefully 90% complete, but just a few things need tinkered with to, to get them across the goal line. And so hopefully, we can use some Lexington staff time and then have them reviewed by Buena Vista and the county and then approved, so that's my update, thank you.
Thank you, David, and good luck crossing the goal line there. Nice, nice metaphor. Special, Ms. Alexander?
No update?
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. At our last meeting, and in light of the cares funding that is from the federal government down to the state localities, they asked Mr. Ziegler and Ms. Strong to serve as a committee to work with staff to talk about and form a best plan forward for working on this, these care dollars. And I'm grateful and would seek a report from the committee.
Thanks. Can everyone hear me okay? I know we've, we've had terrible audio issues all of this meeting. Can, am I, is my microphone also not working?
You're sounding good.
Frank's, Frank's is the only one for me that's not really working.
Yeah, same here.
Okay. Is it microphone, Frank, is your microphone wire loose or something, or?
It's the same microphone that I think all of us have on the laptop.
Okay.
All right, well, so thank you very much. I'm going to talk a little bit about the cares funding. Again, you provided a recap, but we do have $649,635 that is coming to the City of Lexington. And this is coming to Lexington through the CARES Act, and it was directed to us, and it was accompanied by a memo by Secretary Lane, Secretary of Finance in Virginia. And essentially, he said that the funds could be used for necessary expenditures incurred to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease 2019. Additionally, the expenditures would not have been accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27th, 2020. And then finally, these expenses would have been incurred during the period that begins 1 March 2020 and ends 30 December 2020. And then at this point, these funds cannot be used to make up revenue shortfalls. So I think most of us are probably familiar with those guidelines, but that's, that's general guidelines that were in the memo. But I have a feeling that Jake, Jim, and Gary had numerous conference calls and webinars and, and read memos to learn even more about what these funds can and cannot be used for. And so with that, we met last Thursday, and Leslie and I, representing council, we were really fortunate that already, like I said, Jim, Jake, and Gary had already done a lot of work. And so we spent an hour together and, and kind of hashed out a framework that, that we all felt pretty comfortable with. And I have, I know I've already shared that with council members, but I'd like to, like to hit on some of those, those categories. And so the summary that I will provide, it's Jim typed it up, and he hit it, he really captured what we discussed and what also we believe is legal, because the last thing we want to do is run afoul of the law or auditors. And so we've already had even input from our, from our city auditors to make sure that, again, we do things correctly. But we're proposing five main categories. The categories would include city operational responses would be one. Another would be funds for public facilities, safety modifications. Another would be, and I'll use the term economic development, but we need to be cautious in that term because the line, the language in the act doesn't necessarily allow for economic development funds. So there will be a way to try to help businesses through that, through that, that pot of money. We also hope to appropriate some money for community assistance responses. I'll get into some detail what that is. And then finally, for our schools and how they may need to respond to the COVID-19. All in all, the five categories, we've assigned percentages of the $649,000. And the percentages that we've assigned actually allows for about 10% unallocated at this point. And, and so that, we believe, might just leave us with a little bit of wiggle room as we go into the next six months and the unknown. So I'll hit on now each of those five categories, and if you have any questions, stop me. I'll try to do my best, or I'll just defer to Jim, he can take them. But the city operational responses, we believe that we should reserve about 35% of the funds for the city operational responses. This would include funds to essentially reimburse ourselves for the funds that we've already spent on medical and protective supplies and the funds that we will spend on medical and protective supplies. And that includes your masks, your backpack foggers, your hand sanitizer, and so on. Also in that category would be city personnel costs. The fact of the matter is, we've had a lot of city staff pulled in the direction of COVID-19 responses. And it's, it's our city manager, it's our finance director, it's our director of emergency management, Trent Roberts, even, you know, our EMT fire folks, our police department. There's so much time that has been spent on COVID-19 response, training, et cetera. And so we believe that this law does allow us to, to cover those costs incurred with, with some of these funds. Additionally, in that category, we believe that we should make sure that city staff that, that needs to have a laptop or should have a laptop so that they can work from home, that they have one. Over the last couple of months, we've had staff working from home using their personal machines, and that might not be the right thing to do. And so if there's a way to, to get staff what they need so they can work from home and be effective, this might be the opportunity, opportunity to do it. Also, within this, I hit a little bit on the use of funds for PPE. We would definitely be working with the Virginia Department of Health and our local hospital system and so on to make sure that we're aligned with what they have, what we need to have, that we're not duplicating efforts, and we want to be smart about, about those items. So that's one of the categories, and that's a big percentage, 35% is our current thinking. And, and I'll tell you, just, you never know what, what days are going to hold where you might not feel that you're going to have expenses for COVID-19, and then something might happen and all of a sudden you incur a couple thousand dollars in one day, whether it be for, for staff or testing, or you might have staff out of the office or something, and you, and you need to pull in folks or pay overtime due to COVID-19. So we, we feel 35% is a good number for, for us to plan with. Next, we do believe that some of our facilities, as a result of COVID-19, could potentially receive some modifications for, for public safety and public health. And so right now, we're looking at 15% of the funds to allocate towards those potential modifications. Potential modifications, and we still want to make sure that we follow the letter of the law, but it could be touchless building entry systems or, or paper towel dispensers that you don't have to touch to get the paper towel, or faucets, or, or that, that, that just, we're, we're taking care of our employees. That's the bottom line, that we're asking our employees to come into City Hall and work at Public Works and, and work throughout the city and that they have proper safety modifications to their place of employment. Additionally, moving on, 20% of the funds right now is what we would like to direct towards business support and recovery, and that's kind of more of the key words maybe than economic development. It's business support and recovery. And so the way that we would do that, we want to, we want to obviously finalize the details, but there are some good programs already happening locally to help some businesses, and we see no need to reinvent the wheel. And if there's a way that the City of Lexington, through our IDA, is able to provide some grants to businesses that have been impacted by COVID-19, we believe that that would be a good use of, of at least 20% of these funds. And that could mean that, that we create safe places throughout Lexington where visitors could grab a meal and eat outside, or it could be directly, grants directly to businesses through the IDA, or if it happens through Main Street Lexington. But we want to, we want to use 20% of the funds for business support and recovery. We also believe that 10% of the funds may be used for community assistance responses. And so this would have to be for responses in the community that we could potentially provide funds to groups that enhance transportation, help feed people, help people with utilities, help people that may have been impacted by COVID-19 in our community. And so this would align pretty well with the community foundation and all, and already, for example, the Health Center, Rockbridge Area Transportation System, RARO. I think you see my, my direction on that and what our committee thought about, and that might be a way to help these groups that do a lot of the helping in our community. And so we, we believe that, that that could be something that's really positive. And obviously, we're not, we were unable to provide our typical funding to some of those groups during this past budget season, so hopefully, maybe we can, we can get some funds to them. And then we would also like to allocate 10% of the money to the city schools for their response and any adaptations that they may need to make. And so I don't, you know, Superintendent Mrs. Walter, she can definitely speak to how that they would use those funds. They are looking at a lot of options, I don't want to... They are looking at a lot of options. I don't want to get out ahead of myself and, and box them in. But they know how they would spend these funds to enhance education and enhance our schools. And, and if we are able to allocate ten percent of the funds to our schools, they will go to very good use. And so those are the five main categories. The percentages I've provided add up to ninety percent of the funds, not a hundred percent, if you're keeping track at home. But we just feel that it's prudent right now to hold back some of the funds for the unknown. So that's kind of an overview, but I would certainly ask Leslie to fill in any gaps in Jake and Gary and Jim. Because I will say that Jake, Gary, and Jim have done a ton of research on this and really helped put this all together for, for us.
Thank you, David. Les, anything you'd like to add?
Oh, David did a great job covering all the points.
Terrific. Staff, have any comments or anything to add? Very good. David, you covered it well, obviously, and thank you to the whole team and for embarking upon this. I know we're going to be much better prepared for dealing and doing this to provide the most amount of support, the most efficient and appropriate and transparent way. So thank you all very much for the report and for all the good work and as we anxiously await our CARES check. Any other questions for, for, for the CARES topic from council members?
I just had a question. Could you just explain, maybe just for the benefit of those, thank you again. It was really, looks like you did a great job in trying to figure out, portioning out the use of the funds. Just about the economic support and recovery, why going through the IDA? I think there's a, that's probably the mechanism we have to do it. But can you explain maybe to those who don't understand why, why we're doing it that way?
Jake, I feel like you're probably pretty equipped to answer that, since you've done all the research and webinars and everything.
Sure. Well, good evening, everyone. The reason being the IDA would be the best conduit for this, and Jared has weighed in and given us his guidance on this as well. There's a lot of state law that really restricts the ability of governments to directly give money to for-profit businesses. And it seems from sitting in on numerous conference calls and webinars from different localities around the state, that pretty much everyone who's doing an economic support program with this grant funding is utilizing their EDA or IDA for this specific purpose. They are the best conduit for allocating these funds to for-profit businesses.
Thank you, Jake. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, council, I think one of the things that we were hoping as a committee that we would get from you this evening is some sort of approval of this framework of how these funds are to be used so that we can then begin to put in place these different overall categories and, and strategies to get this money out to these different programs, agencies, activities that we'd like to see it enter the community by.
And so you recommend a, a motion for endorsement of the report from the CARES committee?
Yes, sir. And to authorize the city manager also then to make those decisions on an operational level with city staff so that we can get, you know, accomplish what needs to be accomplished, some of it fairly quickly. You know, we want to get some of that support out to the business community and to the agencies that support the individuals, our citizens in the community. We want to get it out, you know, this month, not November.
Okay, you want me to make a motion? Okay, I move that we endorse the recommendation of the CARES committee and further direct city manager and his staff to move forward with whatever preparations are.
Implementation.
Implementation.
Second.
Have a motion, Ms. Alexander. Thank you for the second. Any just further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
The sense?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler? Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much again for the, the work and the report, and Jim executed wisely. I do not have a report for this evening, and the only appeal I will make is that we do have some vacancies on boards and commissions. Namely, Katie Shuster has informed us she does not choose to continue serving on the IDA. We thank her for her service. And Stevie Bond is seeking to retire from the ARB. We're grateful for the attention to detail and great work that she has done, but that creates vacancies. And I would welcome folks to apply or contact us to talk about those vacancies and others that we have on boards and commissions. Unless there are any questions, I'll call on city manager for his report.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer my report so that we can go ahead and take care of these remaining items of business and have council consider these other three activities. And then I can give my report after we finish these items, please.
Certainly, certainly. First is consideration of a lease for the Rockbridge Area Relief Association. Document was included in your packet and would ask for council's consideration.
I move that we approve an extension of the current lease of portions of the Piovanna Building to RARA for a one-year period beginning May first, two thousand and twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, for the second. Any discussion?
I, I just had one question. Can we, is there an issue with extending it for four years? And on, just taking out that after the clause that says after the first full year's term of the lease, take that out and so that we have a four-year contract and with six months' notice from any party, we can cancel it. Would that make it easier on everybody?
Look for a response from city attorney of the appropriateness or viability of that.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something we can do. I guess the only issue would be making sure RARA, for whatever reason, doesn't have a problem with that and bring that up for a vote. So I'm not sure Jim could speak to sort of the deadline to get this done. It looks to me as if it's, it's just coming up for renewal, but it looks like it's ending the thirtieth day of April. Is that right, Jim? Yes, sir. It's expired essentially already. We discussed briefly at a longer period of time. I'm sure RARA would probably have no problem considering it. We just thought for the purposes of trying to get something done immediately, we just have a one-year extension. As long as they have six months to get out of the lease as well as we do, I don't think there'd be any problems with a four-year extension.
I think that'll be fine, and maybe this is something Jim and I will work to make sure we keep in mind for next, I guess it'll be February or March when it comes up again, maybe put in a longer term. But given that we need to have something in place as soon as possible, I would suggest going ahead and voting on this tonight and reworking the agreement for the next time it comes up.
That's fine with me.
Very good. I was also under the impression, and I talked to the city manager, that it would have somewhat of an automatic renewal since it does have the six-month kickout for us and four-month for RARA. I don't know, I would ask council if you have an objection to putting in language that would have it renew another four-year term when it comes up, that it wouldn't have to come before council. Again, we would have the, the right to cancel it with six months' notice. Is there any desire to direct the attorney to incorporate that?
I would feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I, I just think as, as long as all of council is aware and just that we, that we recall that we are responsible for all major repairs. And so, you know, that, that, that the lease doesn't call for any shared contributions or, or anything. So if there's a, just you get my drift. I mean, i- if there's an issue, we are the landlord and, and it's all on us, so.
When the HVAC goes out, we get to pay for it, new roof, et cetera.
Correct.
And, and the, the rent technically just covers the utilities.
Right.
Very good.
Do we need to amend the motion? Well, I'm not clear. Can they make the amendment now? Because it sounded like they wanted to get something passed immediately.
Jared's recommendation was to take action on this as presented. And February or in two thousand and twenty-one, they would address the longer term and the potential for automatic rollover. So there, there is a motion in a second before you. Unless there's any other discussion, I would ask for a call for the question. Is everyone clear on what we're voting on?
Yeah.
Roll call vote. Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
The sense?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Next item similarly is consideration of a lease for Community Table.
I move that we approve an extension of the current lease of portions of the Piovanna Building to Community Table for a one-year period beginning May one, two thousand and twenty, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, and permit the city manager to approve a possible addendum for temporary outdoor seating.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander, for the second. Mr. Ayers for the motion. Any discussion?
Just the same thing, if we consider it for the next time around to extend it.
Very good. Okay. Hearing no other discussion, as for roll call vote, Ms. Strong?
Aye.
The sense?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Ayers?
Aye.
Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Next is consideration of proposal from Friends of Rockbridge Swimming for the operation of the outdoor pool. I'd like to recognize Dennis Ayers.
No, thank you. With respect to the force swimming proposal, my sister Leslie Ayers is employed for, by Force Swimming as their aquatic director. So to avoid any perceived conflict here, I'm not going to participate in discussion of this proposal and will abstain from voting on it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll try to remember not to call on you for your vote. And council, you, you received the proposal from Friends of Rockbridge Swimming in your packet, would ask for your consideration.
I move to approve the Friends of Rockbridge Swimming's proposal to operate the outdoor pool for the summer two thousand and twenty season.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Strong, thank you for the second motion. Ms. Hens, we any further discussion on the force swimming? Jim, yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, when I was speaking with the YMCA director, she did have a statement she asked me to provide to you for the record, if I may?
Please.
Okay. YMCA continues to support all community efforts for well-being that benefits the citizens of Lexington and the greater Rockbridge County area. We support partners with the same mission in mind and look forward to continuing our own partnership with Lexington to manage the outdoor pools for the summer of two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, sir.
Can we get a brief overview of what this includes so that the community understands that it's not, the pool is open, but it's open for particular uses and limited capacities?
Yes. Hi, this is Valentina. I was not sure if, this is Valentina Dimitrov-Grajew. I'm the president of Force Swimming. And that is correct. So we, we were thinking that we would open the pool in a limited capacity so that we can have social distancing and we can make sure that everybody's safe and healthy. Currently, we're planning to open the pool for open swim, which means everybody can rent a lane for one hour and swim or walk or just float in the water. The pool would not operate as it normally does during the summer.
Thank you, Valentina. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you so much for, for reviewing our proposal. We really appreciate it. And I also wanted to respond to Bobby's statement. We, we definitely understand that this is a temporary arrangement. And we saw an opportunity to work with the city and community partners to make sure that we can provide some sort of an outlet for wellness and fitness. And, and so that is the reason why we came forth with, forward with this proposal.
Terrific. Thank you. Yes, it's great when we work collaboratively and the YMCA and Force Swimming and City of Lexington, working to meet the needs of our citizens is terrific. So thank you for, for bringing this proposal forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Valentina or, or staff?
We'll make one more clarification, just so, so everybody is on the same page in the community. I mean, the city, we had decided that we didn't feel like we could operate the pool in its normal capacity and keep it safe and meet the COVID regulations, plus there was a financial implication. And thankfully, Friends of Rockbridge Swimming came forward and made this proposal to allow lap swimming and swim team swimming. So basically, lane swimming. And my understanding, and tell me if I'm wrong, but regardless of what the social distancing rules become throughout the summer, that will be the use of the pool for the summer. They're not, the city is not operating it as open swim, even if the social distancing rules are changed. And Force Swimming's plan is not to operate it in that capacity. It will be lane swimming for this summer only. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Let me, I think Leslie would like to comment on that.
Leslie, in our proposal, we said that we would be open to following whatever the guidelines, the current guidelines. We're certainly not going to do anything, we'll be more conservative than whatever the guidelines are. It, it looks as if, that those guidelines are going, will open up to do things like three people in a lane if they're in the same family. So we, we would hope that we could do some kind of family swimming, so it's not typically just one kind of person using it. Families could use the pool as well, as long as they were socially distanced and the area was, was blocked off in an appropriate way. And, and we had spent some time talking to Jim, coming up with some ideas of how we may do that. Of course, we would never do that without going, without going over those things with Jim to see if he thought that were, you know, appropriate, or city council to see if that were appropriate, to, to just, you know, see what's going on with the community or with, with the guidelines. And if they do allow that, which they do right now, an outdoor pool is currently, on Friday, will go from one person per lane to three people if they are related, if they're in the same household. So that adds a little bit of flexibility and also allows you to perhaps three lap swimmers in a family. And I know plenty of them. They're, you know, family of swimmers that would able to come to the pool and la, and swim in the same lane and still do lap swim. But it would allow you to have maybe fifteen people if those current guidelines expanded that. So same thing with swim team, you're able currently now to have three people if they're related. And it's in it, so instead of having a swim team for six people at a time, you're, you're allowed to be a little bit flexible and have a few more than that. So that, that was where we were, were in that. I believe that is part of our, part of our proposal. But, but certainly, I, I can't imagine we, anybody, we are going to, to operate the pool. And we really need the public to understand that. We certainly don't want to disappoint them. But if you, anybody will be disappointed if they expect a, an outdoor pool to go back to what it was last year or the year before, or, or whatever, because it's just not possible in these conditions. So if, Leslie, was that sort of? So Leslie, was that sort of what you were?
Yes.
Did I answer your question?
Leslie did. I was asked by somebody, could a family reserve a lane and basically play in their? They don't have to swit, lap swim. They can play in their lane.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And they're even, you know, yeah, yeah. So there are, yes. And we are going to, we have just spent the last, I don't know, setting up for tomorrow. The indoor pool opens tomorrow to lap swimming. And so we're also using a scheduling system and we're going to apply that scheduling system to the, to the outdoor pool. People will register for that. We will help people do that for people that don't know how to do that. It also acts as a, basically a contact tracing mechanism. So scheduling across the community is a really wonderful thing, even in restaurants or wherever, so that you can very quickly ascertain where some, if somebody became sick, who they had been around. So anyway, I, I just want you to understand that we are, we are much, we have taken these guidelines incredibly seriously and we're working very hard and we'll be working through them. Tomorrow, we've opened it up to just membership for three days, people that know how to use this pool. And then on Monday, we'll open it up to the entire community to schedule online. And I, I will be glad to send everybody that, the email that, the invite on that so that you can see how we're operating, operating the indoor pool. And I, I think that might relax you a, a little bit. But no one, no one is more concerned about the community health than me in terms of, because it, it will certainly be, feel like my responsibility, which of course it will be. And so I just want to assure you that it will be done, it will be done very carefully. So, and obviously with your feedback, if, you know, we will stay in contact with Jim and city council, if we wish, every step of the way to just make sure it's going smoothly.
Couple of questions, if I may. Some folks are asking, it's $5 per person for one hour. So if my family of four reserves a lane or three people reserve a lane from a family, that family will end up paying $15 for one hour in a lane. Is that correct?
Well, no, we, we are going to, we're going to schedule. When we first put in this proposal, remember, there wasn't that option. So we are, we would come up with a family of a per lap, a per lane rate, not a single user rate. And so, so your family wouldn't pay that much because after all, you're only using it for an hour. And what I had envisioned, if we do go to a family swim in the evening, for instance, from say five to 6:30 and then maybe 6:30 to eight, it would be more of a two, a two seating reservation. So to give families a little more time and we're able to put in more families in that space. So those are just some ideas we're kicking around. We won't do anything without thoroughly thinking it through. So I really encourage, if you, if you go forward with this for the public to understand, this is one step at a time. We are, and that, and that's just all we can do. We want to make it available to people. And the, the other thing to remember is that we're not allowing someone to come in and schedule every day unless, unless there are openings later on, but we're, we're scheduling so that everybody gets the opportunity to use the pool. So we want the whole community, if they want to partake in family swim throughout the summer, to have a, a chance at doing that rather than perhaps, you know, 10 people all summer long. So that, those are just some of the issues that we're working through. And I don't have all the answers yet, but I'm certainly thinking about them and come, trying to come up with the best solution for our community.
This is, this is, this is helpful to the community. The current proposal that has been shared with council does, and again, I say this for the public, it does say that Four Swimming will share their revenue spreadsheets with the city. And also, you know, over the last five years of dealing with the outdoor swimming pool, one of the things that the public has been really, really emphatic about is advertising. And, and that was actually inserted into the contract with the why on how they had to advertise annually. And I know this is a completely different model, so I'm not going to, I'm not asking for, for that level of detail. But I would just ask that we do publicize this because it is the public pool and you're making the signup sheet available to anybody if they sign up. And so annually, if they, again, the $5 per lane rate for now, and it might be adjusted if it moves to, you know, a family per lane, and that's great. But I would just hope that all of the public knows that everyone, not just members of Four Swimming, have access to that signup sheet and that that is their only barrier to getting to, to getting to use the public city pool. That's just important to me and I learned very much so during the last five years of dealing with the outdoor pool in the contract.
Well, things have, things have changed a little bit in terms of advertising. We certainly always used the newspapers for advertising several years ago, but we now have pretty active Facebook and, and social media that we'll, that we will certainly use. And I'm, and I'm sure and I hope that the, that the city will certainly help us with that. And we are currently putting out this information, writing this information. And of course, it changes every week or two weeks what, what you can do and, and how we're going to do it. But, but to keep the community educated on how we're going to use this pool. I don't want people to show up and be disappointed because they can't use the pool in the way that they had thought. The, the worst thing in the world is having a carload full of children ready to go swimming and telling them they can't do that. That is not, I want to do this in, in a way that, so I'm thinking through those. So I'm on the same page, David. And any ideas you have, if you don't mind sending them my way, I would really appreciate it.
Leslie, this is Marilyn. Um, that description is what I'm sitting here agonizing over, thinking that that is exactly what's going to happen. Children that have been familiar with coming over there for years, not as part of a family, but possibly just groups of friends and not being able to swim. So educating the public and explaining this in a very careful and strategic way and, and why this is happening because of COVID is going to be crucial so that you all don't run into problems and so that our citizens totally understand what the use is going to be looking like.
We, yes, one, one. I'm sorry. Marilyn, one idea that I had was to make sure that I have all the appropriate information for when that family can swim. So that if they by chance come at the wrong time or a ti, time that's not yet, that I can direct them and go ahead and schedule them. So at least I can turn what is an initial disappointment into something later on to be something to look forward to. So those are some of the things that I'm, I'm, I'm working through.
And if I could add one more thing, so the board discussed this extensively, this particular issue, because we were concerned as well. And so one of the things that we thought we could do is write a letter in the newspaper, in the news gazette and give it to the Rockbridge advocate in the news gazette, clearly outlining the rationale for why the pool would be open, the way it would be open, and, and the procedures for scheduling an appointment to swim and so on. So we also thought we would, we would post it on our Facebook account, but also ask the city to do the same and maybe even put up some posters in locations that are, that are frequently visited.
I, I noticed yesterday at the protest that there were so many families there who were, had their masks on. And that's a wonderful thing. And, and the thing that concerns me are those people who are going through this business as usual, who are not protecting and they're not doing the social distancing or any of that. And they are going to be the ones coming in the cars and not understanding that they can't do this like they did last year.
Right. Well, we, we will, we will, let me, let me tell you, they're doing that now. I have been here at the pool all day and that is already happening. So they are coming and the doors are closed. So it is still happening. And I'm getting phone calls all day long about, about the pool. So we'll just try to turn it around to show them some of the things that they can do at the pool later on. So.
And we will work closely here in the office with Valentina and Leslie to make sure we get the information out through any channels we have available. I, I feel like, you know, every effort will be made. So people may not hear it. We may not be able to get to every individual, but we'll certainly do our best to use all channels available.
Thank you. Members of council, have any other questions regarding this topic? Grateful for, for swimming and the, the creative idea and look forward to the smooth, efficient and thoughtful execution and close work with city staff to have a great product for the summer. Certainly wild and crazy times, but if we can get people out and join the pool safely and complying with the governor's rules, it'd be, be better for our community. With that, have a motion of second, no further discussion. As for a roll call vote, Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Ms. Sents?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with Mr. Ayers abstaining. Excellent. Okay. And city manager, you want to finish with your report?
Yes, sir. Health insurance cost, as you all know, with the fiscal year 21 budget going into place July 1st, we have new healthcare costs. Thankfully, since we did not increase compensation, the insurance rates are only going up 1.1%, which equates to about $5 per pay period for the average employee. So it's, it's minimal, but the employees will pay a little bit more in the coming year. Natural gas contract renewal, the city just renewed a contract, the current contract for natural gas for a three-year period. And the price was decreased by 22 cents per unit. And this will produce a small savings in each of the next three years. We also believe that prices will probably increase over that time span, so there'll be a bigger savings than anticipated. But even just against what we're currently paying, the prices will be less in the next three years. Summer street paving, we all look forward to that and changes continue to be made at the state level. Unfortunately, just this week, we heard from the Commonwealth Transportation Board that some of the funding we anticipated getting may not be there. The Commonwealth Transportation Board is thinking of deferring all primary extension paving projects and revenue sharing projects until FY '22. We don't know that for sure. They will be deciding that in the month of June this month. But at this point in time, the main project we were doing, or considered doing here in town, is the Main Street paving project. And about $225,000 of that funding came from the primary extension paving funds from the Commonwealth Transportation Board. So we have several steps, Jake, options, I should say, Jake, Jeff and I are looking at. Obviously, we could defer these projects until FY '22 and see if that state funding does turn up. We could go ahead and do the portions of the project for which we have other funds available and not do the entire project. We could also do the entire project and take money out of our fund balance reserve to assure that we got it done this year. I would say that, again, we won't know where the Commonwealth Transportation Board will fall on this issue this month in June. But we have to make a decision soon because we can't wait until July to put a contract in place and then get the paving done. So we will be bringing a recommendation to you at the next meeting. And frankly, as we've reviewed the state budget and what's occurred there, I would not be comfortable asking you or advising you to wait until FY '22 to get those state funds. Probably the budget will be tighter for the state in FY '22 than it is in FY '21. And we'll be competing with all the projects that have been delayed for funding and new projects that were contemplated for FY '22. So it just seems to me that that's probably a poor option to consider if we want this project done in the next year and a half to two years instead of three to five years from now. Anyway, it's disappointing, but that's part of the fallout that I believe we're going to see from COVID-19 across the broad spectrum of support that we get from the state and funding we receive from the state. COVID-19 testing, as you all know, the health department is doing mobile testing throughout our region. And this week it was in Buena Vista. There were 138 tests performed in Buena Vista. The results obviously aren't available yet. Last week, we had the testing in Lexington. There were 257 tests completed in Lexington. And of those tests, only one showed up or turned up as positive. And that individual, in fact, had been positive beforehand and wanted to see if they were still positive. So it's not a new case of COVID in the community. They've also tested out in the county and will do so again next week. And these tests will continue every week at different locations in our region. The tests are not limited to Buena Vista, Lexington or Rockingham, excuse me, Rockbridge County. It doesn't matter where you're resident of. You can go to these testing sites. It's free. There's no questions asked. So anybody can show up and have a test if they desire. BMI Aquatic Center, you've probably all seen this week and for the past week and a half, that a lot of work has gone on in North Main Street, Massey and Randolph, around the Aquatic Center post site. Most of that work has been natural gas line work in preparation for that center. However, the city crews have also worked on a water valve in that area that's also in anticipation of that project occurring. So that's just the underground preparation for that project. Justice demonstrations that we've all seen in the community last night in remembrance and concern for the treatment of George Floyd in Minneapolis, other black people in our community was a very peaceful and civic event. Hundreds of people gathered to send their message and their concern, not only to our community, but to the world community. And Saturday, of course, there will be another event at 11 o'clock in, gosh, I wrote down the park here. Is it Richardson Park, I believe? Is that right? Thank you.
Yes.
Didn't write it down, but, and if you're interested in coming, please do. Bring your own chair, bring some water, and there'll be a number of speakers there. And again, I'm sure very civic and respectful demonstration and show of concern that we, as a society and as a community, continue to support and free black individuals from oppression in every sense that we can. Animal rescue, very unusual rescue occurred this morning, very early in the morning. An employee coming from Amherst, who was employed here in Lexington, hit a young deer on the Blue Ridge Parkway area of Route 60 coming across on that road. When they arrived here in town, they realized they still had the animal lodged in their bumper and front grill. It was a very young fawn. And they called the Lexington Police Department. Officer Hasten came in and removed that animal. The animal was unbelievably only injured with a broken leg. So we called up Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, had them come and retrieve the small fawn. Officer Hasten took care of it until they came and calmed it down, kept it quiet. So hopefully, the animal can be rejuvenated, if you will. We haven't heard yet if that's the case, but there was no bleeding from the mouth, no other injuries of any sort. The animal was very quiet. And I happened to be in the parking lot of this morning at 6 o'clock and Officer Hasten and another officer waved me over so I could see this beautiful little animal that survived that ride all the way from the Blue Ridge Parkway in somebody's grill. So pretty amazing. Electric vehicle charging station, the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality has asked the city to participate in and provide a site for electrical vehicle charging station in the city. And we've been working with Main Street Lexington to identify a spot. We have to provide eight to 10 parking spaces for this, and we've identified nine spaces in the Roy Smith parking lot. That's directly behind the county courthouse between Randolph Street and Barner Lane. If we are awarded the charging station, it will be free of charge for 10 years. And obviously, as we look at what occurs with the continued rollout of electric vehicles, the opportunity of a charging station here in Lexington along I-81 as people travel north to south and I-64 as people. south, and I-64 as people travel east to west, would help our tourism as people have to stay overnight and charge their vehicles, or our visitation. And so it's just an opportunity. We haven't been approved for it yet, but we have submitted that, that site for, um, consideration. May tax collections. As we continue to evaluate the economic impacts of COVID-19, we're carefully watching city tax collections. As of the month of May, real estate taxes are now down 8% despite a 2.4% rate increase last year. And to meet our FY '20 target, we'll need larger than average collection in the first week of June. This is the last week for payment of tenant taxes. Personal property taxes, uh, the collections are down 1.5% from last year. Meals taxes for May are down 59% from May of 19, or May of 2019, and 1.9% total over, year over year. Meals taxes had been very strong prior to COVID, uh, but now they are showing a slight decline, and obviously that situation will continue to worsen, we believe. Lodging taxes declined 75% from May of 19 to May of '20, and are down 15% year over year. Sales tax collection lags for two months behind actual sales, and thus far they are still showing a not, excuse me, 1.9% increase month over month, and a 7.4% increase year over year. However, we expect that to change dramatically again, because there is a two-month delay in the collection and recording of those taxes. Water sales, the absence of students in town and lower economic activity, water sales in May were down 37% from last year, that despite a 10% rate increase. Of course, city costs from the, uh, Maury Service Authority for water purchases were also down for a like amount, but this is just another indicator of the measure of economic decline that has been caused by COVID-19. Outdoor activities, on, on briefing earlier this week, one bit of good news, the National Forest Service has reported a significant increase and a high degree of interest in hiking and camping activities in the Rockbridge area. They also reported a significant increase in river activity, kayaking, canoeing, and rafting. This is one area of the economy and economic recovery. We likely need to work with our partners, Rockbridge County, Univista, and Regional Tourism to promote and support to take advantage of what is predicted to be another strong change and trend in the near economic recovery. Cares Fund awards, we did receive our check for the cares funds, $649,635 this past Monday. Um, and that is all I have, Mr. Mayor Councilmember. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer those.
Members of council, have any questions for Jim?
Question about the parking spaces in the Roy Smith lot.
Mm-hmm.
That the, uh, those spaces will be designated for electric vehicles only, and we're losing, losing those spots to regular traffic?
Yes, ma'am, that is true. And again, they're way to the back of that lot, uh, close to Varner Street. And as we've surveyed that space and worked with the Main Street Lexington staff, seldom are they used. Now, if we had a very, very large event in town, I suspect there'd probably be times they'd be in use, but, um, seldom are those, you know, they're right up against Varner Street, near the, um, Nelson Street Bridge. So they're way back of the lot.
Okay. So that doesn't interfere with the spaces that the Department of Social Services would need?
Not that I'm aware of, ma'am.
Okay. We might want to check with them just to be sure.
We will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? Hearing none. Uh, just make the observation, if I heard you correctly, uh, meals tax down 59% for the month of May, which is, um, huge. But at the same time, congratulations to the restaurants that have stayed open and provided meals for, um, customers through carryout and curbside delivery. Appreciate their, uh, tenacity and willingness to, to stick to it and keep operating. Uh, next time on the agenda is city attorney. Jared, do you have a report for us this evening?
Just a brief update on the Enfield Road Water Tower, uh, declaratory judgment, trying to get things moving. Uh, Kent Gibson was representing, or technically still is representing Rusty Ford, who is one of the defendants in the case. Uh, Kent has taken a position with Blue Ridge Legal Services and has moved to withdraw from the case. Um, up till now, Rusty has not provided the name of another attorney who is going to take over for Kent. So we are trying to get a date, um, to get in front of the judge to have a hearing on Kent's motion to withdraw to essentially force the issue for, um, Rusty to either move forward unrepresented, or to hire a new lawyer, um, by that point. So, um, moving things as fast as we can, but still not making, um, as much progress as anyone would like. But we're doing everything that we can. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Jared, and thank you for guiding us through the evening. Any, uh, new business that council members have? Um, hearing none. No reason for a called meeting. And, uh, anything else for the good of the cause this evening? Hearing none. Sorry for the audio problems and, um, and the communication I had with Janie earlier. I really look forward to when we can all be together in the same room, but thankful for Zoom until then. Uh, I will, uh, we will stand adjourned, and thank you all very much, and have a great evening and a better weekend. Thank you.
See you Saturday.
11 o'clock, Saturday morning.
Good evening. Have a great one.
You too.